What a nice turnout. There must be something interesting happening here. Most of all, Karen Vincent now seems to give an indication. And we'll have a pledge to the flag, please. Karen?
Let us stand and bow heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Lord, we ask to help us engage in meaningful discussion as we move forward. These and all other blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is finished, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started into the formal meeting tonight, I want to go over some background and ground rules for you. A lot of you have signed up to talk. If we were to let everybody talk, if we wanted to talk, we all should have packed their lunch and breakfast. So that ain't gonna happen. What we're gonna do is those of you who have a position that you want to take, each side's gonna have 10 minutes. So think about who's gonna represent you, but we all can't talk at one time. So y'all think about who's gonna represent you and speak. We are appointed by the Board of Commissioners to come and hear these things and listen to what folks have to say, hear both sides of the argument, and then come forward with a recommendation to the commissioners who make the ultimate decision. The process that we're gonna go through tonight is that the Planning Department's gonna present the request. The applicant is then going to speak and add information as they see fit. We're gonna ask questions at that point with the applicant or the staff. At a certain point, once the applicant has finished, we're gonna then have those that have interest different, that some will have interest in support of the applicant, some will have interest on the other side of the equation. Again, 10 minutes is the max for each particular side. Nicole, you're gonna be the timekeeper, please.
Yes, sir.
And we have one more commissioner coming in the door. Come on in here, Ken. Once the other side has spoken, the commissioners may ask questions. So all questions are to be from the audience or to be directed to us. Okay, not to the applicant, applicant not to y'all, but all to us. We hear those out. Sometimes people get excited. Here are some smirks there and some smiles going. And that's understandable. But what influences me in hearing this discussion are reasoned thoughts, not thoughts that are unreasonable and not outburst. So let's all have a respectful discussion so that we can all hear what's going on and understand and be respectful of everybody, because everybody's entitled. The applicant's entitled and you're entitled. As long as they stay, everybody stays within their 10-minute allotment. So with that said, we have a reading and approval of the previous minutes.
I'll make a motion that they approve this review.
Is there a second?
There.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise your right hands. No she cares, thank you. There is no "oh" business. So in new business, we're gonna open up a public hearing on RZ 190212. And I'll ask Wes to give us the staff's recommendation and background on this request.
Yes, sir. This is RZ 21-190212. The applicant is Tony Nguyen, 271 Livestone Way, Jasper, 30143. The location is 344 Bent Tree Drive, Jasper, Georgia. The rezoning is from rural residential to highway business. The parcel ID is 044A-015. It's climate-controlled, many warehouses for the proposed use. The current land use is undeveloped, single-family. The character area is East Pickens Conservation Area. The lot size is 2.83 acres. The road access is Bent Tree Drive. The zoning history is the subject property is currently zoned rural residential according to official zoning map. The executive summary, if you'll see that the zoning land uses and adjacent properties are listed below. The executive summary is the applicant requests to rezon a total of 2.83 acres at 344 Bent Tree Drive from rural residential to highway business. The applicant is requesting the zoning change to develop the property to expand the existing mini warehouse businesses that he owns at 254th Bent Tree Drive to include much-needed climate-controlled storage. The recommendation for the staff is that we approve a highway business request from rural residential highway business. The additional comments are, in addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and the video recording of the planning commissioners' hearing, including and not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information be made a part of the record and shall be available for the Board of Commissioners to review. Any questions?
Any questions for Wes? Okay. We have Tony and our Kimberly, who's gonna speak? Yes, Tony?
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Thank you for allowing me to come in here today to propose that's what I'm going to do. I bought this land in March of 2021, and I already have the business K&amp;B Mini Warehouse as flow to this land, and then now it's full. And we need to build more climate control because we don't have any climate-controlled storage units in this area. First, I want to build an RV parking, but according to the objection of many people who live in that area, they say that it's too big, they don't want big commercials. So my decision is I don't build RV parking. And what I want to build is a storage unit in the back of the existing, in the back of the existing building. And it's about like nine or 10 feet high, so when you ride it in and out, you don't see anything. You just see the building, the existing building, but the building I'm going to build, you don't see anything in there. Because I already planned to build a lot in Marble Hill, so I have enough and I don't need to make it too big. This is the picture of the lot in the back of the building, in the back of the existing building. So this is a picture, and yeah, I'm going to build. Also, in the front, I already planned, I have some landscape and put a side brick and a few years will grow, let go for everything. One more thing is, I'm going to build my home right here to live. This is my home, and I'm proud that I'm a part of this community. I want to build a beautiful home and live, and I want to make this community better and better. I thank you for everybody who come here to give me the advice, the objection, what solution I find. I want to find a good solution to make my hometown good. Yeah, that's all I want to say. I just want a small building in the back of the city building. That's all I want to do. Thank you.
So Tony, originally, when we met a month or two ago, maybe three months, you were talking about RV, and you pull that completely, there'll be no RV.
Completely out there.
And so the red, the red area designated, that's your only plans?
Yes, sir.
And how many units is that gonna be? Is that gonna be all climate-controlled?
It will be one building, 100, my city, and it will be about 30-some unit in one building. And that's about, I think about 10 feet high. The existing building about 18 feet high, so it will cover, and you don't see anything in the back.
Other questions from the Board for Tony?
Does it have to be manned, the building, with it being climate-controlled? Does it have to have somebody there, or they're assigned hours of operation?
We already have a site in the front, sir, the site of K&amp;B Mini Warehouse. We already have a site.
When's it open? I mean, do you have a set time for when you're projecting it?
Whenever I have the approval, I will start to build. I'm waiting on that.
Okay, are you gonna open, say, at 8:00 in the morning, then close it at 5:00 in the evening?
Oh, okay. Oh, you mean the time is, it used to be 9:00 to 8:00. I have the gate and people can key the number, whoever ran the unit, they have the key number, so they just key and the gate open, they get in and out. And the other people cannot get in. I also built a gate in the K&amp;B Mini Warehouse, I put a gate. I spent about $100,000 to put a new paving, make it look nice. That is the way I'm doing business. I care about my community.
Other questions for Tony?
Hi, yes, you originally put this in as neighborhood commercial, and then you changed it to highway business. That's fine.
Yes, ma'am. I really don't know which one is the right one. So I come to ask the staff, and the staff say, you do this, and then another month I received the email and said, it's wrong, you need to change to different. So I really don't know what different between neighborhood, business and highway business. I really don't know what different. So I need some help, and I come back to review.
Wes?
Yes, ma'am.
Why was it changed from, maybe the commercial to highway business?
Well, as a service to the citizenry, I realized that he had applied for exactly the same thing he had done before, which was denied. Why would you take the man's money and have him? So I said, this appears to have everything you need to be denied again. I said, the option is to go highway business. And he withdrew and went from there.
Yes, I just, yes. I'm loving it over there.
Further questions for Tony? Kimberly?
Yes.
Will you want to speak now?
Well, again, just to repeat what Tony said, he's worked very, very hard on listening to everything and every comment and every objection. And he's worked very hard to eliminate what seemed to be so offensive to people, but again, to add what he needs to be the business person. And I agree that once the units are built, the existing building that is there will block the view, and you'll never know that this climate control is there. And so again, he has listened very carefully to the objections, and he's trying to accommodate as much as he can.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Kimberly from the Board? Okay, looks like we've got a dozen or so, maybe more, of folks that want to speak against. Now, we can't have everybody, we don't have time for everybody. Do y'all want to group, or how do you want to, how do you want to handle your?
We kind of have an order, if it would be okay, and we have made sure that we're within that 10 minutes. If Ken Tenedini could speak first, and then Bob Crowell, and then Ralph Morse, Bill Johnson, and Lori Holland.
So we've got, we have five, is that? Five people are gonna speak. We've gotta say that, I wanna do the math. I've got two minutes, right? Yeah. Hold you two minutes, Ken. I know that's tough on you. All right, so. Tell me that, tell me that order again of.
We'll talk very fast, but Ken Tenedini.
And Bob?
Bob Crowell, Ralph Morse.
Hold on. Okay. After Ralph?
Lori Holland. And Bill Johnson.
Hold on. Okay, so.
Let me change. Maybe instead Bill Johnson.
I'm sorry?
Tammy Slyder instead of Bill Johnson.
Did you say questions can be addressed with the board?
All right, Bill's out, Tammy's in. All right, so let me make sure. So I've got Barry Rosenberg. Barry, it's all right for you?
You know, he just showed me, because this is the first time I've seen this planner.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest, I live in the brown house with the lake in the front yard, so I'm one of the closest to them.
Yeah.
I don't have a real problem with what he's doing.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now, Bill, you bopped it out, right?
Yeah, but I did have a question. So the Board, does that, do questions get addressed too? Because I heard something that sounded really irregular earlier in conversation, because I didn't understand the terminology, and I didn't know, is it, do we ask y'all questions before everybody talks?
No, you can say it till the end. And David? David?
Yes, I hear you.
All right, you're not gonna speak, right?
These other people have more of a command others than I do.
Okay, I'm just making sure. Teresa Hope?
Hope, no, I will not speak.
You're okay. Leah Kelly, no, Leah Kelly, where's Leah? There you are.
I will not be speaking.
You're gonna let somebody speak? This is like, you know, when you're getting married and things like, speak now or forever. And Barbara?
Karen, I don't have. No, I, I.
You're okay.
I might have a question, but that's it.
And Marcia? Marcia, you're okay.
Well, if you have extra time.
And that's doubtful?
You can just put me in there.
Okay. We got five.
I'm ready whenever you are.
So we're going, we're going. Bill? Yes. Yeah, so we're gonna give you the minute and a half warning, which means you gotta wrap up in 30 seconds.
That's hard.
You told me you've sat in this seat before and talked fast with a bunch of Yankees around. Hey, Yankees is not some bad work. My fault. All right, Ken, you're on.
Okay, quickly, if you looked at what the previous planners had suggested, they had voted for denial. And I served on the Master Plan Committee in 2018 with Bruce Armstrong and a guy named Ethan Calhoun, who was a state planner. We discussed that whole area up there, and it assured me that it would be primarily residential. Okay? So from there, I can tell you this, that when you look at your code, it's 67-8-10, look it up right now. It tells you very precisely that that is, that you cannot have a business located in a residential area. Okay? So if you look at what he's doing there, you're actually, he's requesting, even though it may turn out nice, he's requesting a business location, here, my good side, in a residential area between two residents, and that's illegal. And what they call that in zoning, from my 17-years experience, that's called spot zoning. And spot zoning gets you in legal trouble, because that's not, that's Title 40 and Title 36. There's different things that designate that. So that's the issue that'll get you in trouble. So the Board better be very responsible to make sure they understand what they're doing when they let this business be located between, between the two residents. If you look on a map, you'll see.
30 seconds.
All right, next, who's next?
You have 30 seconds left.
Okay, keep going.
Okay. What Ken said regarding the County Order 67-8, 8-10, it also says it's for businesses which benefit from direct access to major roads. Now, and it defines what major roads are. This isn't even, in my opinion, a secondary road. Cove Road, Jerusalem Church, those take highway is what the ordinance would say are roads other than major. So this is, in my opinion, a side street. And the prior hearing that I saw on recorded showed that this commission recommended approval. I think it was a three, a two vote, and I think you, Mr. Preble, did the.
I broke the pass.
So I'm not sure where this came from, that it was recommended something differently. So.
Yeah, we approved it with a conditional means.
Okay. And then, you know, what Ken has already said, the comprehensive plan for this area provides, the recommendation from the staff was neither commercial, neither commercial or highway business. Now, something must have changed in their research and analysis, because now I'm hearing that they're recommending it. So I'm not sure how that can happen, and I would really like to understand why. And then another thing is, in the procedures, Ordinance 6715 says the burden of proof is on the applicant.
30 seconds.
For the public health, safety, morality, and welfare, and the applicant must include the proposed merits of the application, compatibility with surrounding and nearby properties, and whether the proposal will adversely affect the adjacent properties, suitability, evidence of need, and conformity with a policy intended to locally adopt the comprehensive plan. I heard a little bit of that, but didn't hear all of it. And in reviewing the application that was submitted, there were a number of items that I could not find in the package that went forward.
Time.
And the guidance says they're supposed to be included.
Who's next?
We'll get, we'll have those things addressed when we get through here for everybody, okay?
Who's next?
All right, Ralph?
I have some duties for y'all, if that's okay.
Do we have to read those and?
This is bedtime story review.
Yeah, don't be a test.
Okay, I'm gonna address you guys. So I'm a newcomer to Jasper. We've only been up here, my wife and I, this year. And the last week or so, I was trying to think about what I wanted to say tonight. There's a significant number of items that can be discussed, so I, while y'all were talking, I crossed off five of them. I can talk about the lighting aesthetics of Mr. Nguyen's existing storage buildings. And it reminds me, you know, if you haven't seen it, and there's pictures in there, reminds me of Stalin 13 from Hogan's Heroes.
Yeah.
It looks like a prison. I don't have a few seconds. So there's a huge pile of debris in the yard there. That's not a big deal, quite frankly. But if you look behind tab number two, that's the best picture that I can get at night to try to describe to you what it really looks like, and it does look like a prison. But I'm not gonna talk about that. I will say that the Pickens County Building Code guidelines for commercial structures, there's a section 38-856, and I.
30 seconds.
Anyway, see tab three, it's in there, talks about the minimum height and spread, and what he's putting in the ground right now is not even close. Here's what I want to talk about, and it's not really me that you should be hearing from. You should be hearing from the 775 folks who signed the 22 pages of the petition. That's tab number one. I have an obligation to speak for those guys. And if you recommend this rezoning and it's approved, it'll absolutely open up the floodgates, and you'll be opening up a Pandora's Box for future.
Time.
Commercial development. Thank you.
Well done, Ralph. Lori Holland?
Good evening. I'm speaking towards his integrity and his business operating practices. My husband and I rented three units at K&amp;B in October of 2020, went down a couple of months ago to begin moving things out and found water, standing water in two of those units. I found $4,000 worth of damaged items. I called him, and he said he would take care of it. So my idea of him taking care of it was for him to pay for what was damaged. His idea was for him to haul it to the dump. He said he wasn't liable because we signed a contract. In that contract, he takes absolutely no responsibility for anything. Nothing. We ended up filing a claim through his insurance company because this was negligence and poor-maintained facilities on his part. We won our case with that insurance company. This will show you his integrity is severely lacking. Tony had the driveways paved at the storage units. I found out from that asphalt company that Tony was planning to sue them for the water damage in my unit, and it was complete coincidence that I ran into them while they were down there inspecting my unit. I informed them that there was no way they were at fault for that because the water was coming through the ceiling. It was not going up under the door from where it had been paved.
30 seconds.
It was a complete miracle, blah, blah, blah. So now, if that doesn't show you what, he was going to sue them completely out of the blue to cover his hide, if you would. Just because he says he's going to do this, that, and the other, you cannot trust that. His current buildings are in a bad state of disrepair, and I'm willing to bet that there will be more of the same thing in those new buildings. He's not taking care of his current facilities, so why is he going to add more? The best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. And when someone shows you who they are, you need to believe them.
Could you stop the clock for just one second, please?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not exactly sure why it is that the man's integrity is in question here, and it has absolutely nothing to do with this zoning hearing as far as the property itself. That is strictly outlined, in my opinion.
I'll be happy.
I'm sure you will.
Yeah.
But we are here to discuss the merits of the zoning classification, not a personal gripe in between you and the gentleman.
If he does not take care of what he has, then why would he take care of anything else?
That's in between you and him, not this plant family.
That's it, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Tammy?
Hi.
All right, Tammy, come on.
I just want to speak about the comprehensive plan. I don't understand how Justin, the former director, said that it should be denied under highway business or neighborhood commercial. The comprehensive character plan of East Pickens Conservation Area says, "The county's most significant scenic views and environmentally sensitive area are preserved to maintain the county's image as the gateway to the mountains." Having this up there will not. It will hurt Bent Tree's properties. The next thing, under development pattern, preserve beautiful rural quality of the area. Limit grading and clearing. He has destroyed trees in front of the other, other area. Preserve natural hydrology and drainage ways. Minimize scenic and environmental impacts. The primary land uses, greenway conservation areas, undeveloped land left in a natural state, low-intensity, single-family residential, hiking trails, tourism. None of that fits within the comprehensive plan. And in the last, we have 22 units, and Saturday, two weeks ago, when I was taking signatures for the petition, I had four people that came up and told me they're moving out of his units because all of their products are covered in mold and mildew. We don't need another one, and we certainly don't need it on Bent Tree Drive in between two homes. And finally, I just don't understand how, what has changed when the staff recommended denial of neighborhood commercial request upon review of the application was submitted under the incorrect zoning classification.
30 seconds.
However, denial recommendation is based solely upon map amendment criteria. If application were submitted under correct zoning classification, denial would still be recommended, as the comprehensive plan does not provide for this zoning NC or HB within this character area. So if we're not gonna follow the comprehensive plan, why even have it? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, would you like to address some of the concerns raised, please?
And Tammy and Bob both were with me in the hall and showed them the map.
And Tammy and Bob both were with me in the hall and showed them the map, comprehensive land use map. It's quite contrary to the verbal part of the comprehensive plan, and you can see the actual commercial development in there, and you can see the actual commercial zoning. It's in your packet that I presented, not only here, but along there. It's ironic that all of a sudden, these little islands occur, and there's people that have businesses up and down Cove Road, and they're saying that it's not fitting in. I don't know if you've ever looked, if you go on the comprehensive plan and see the large area of East Pickens County, it covers probably the vast majority of the property that is here in Pickens County. And to say that it's not fitting in that plan, the map, then you're seriously mistaken. You need to go look at it and see. Now, the wording in the comprehensive plan is beautiful, it really is, and I understand that, but it says that in almost every area that we have. So please look at the map and see the reality, and that's why I made my judgment and my opinion on this.
Wes, I've got a question. Is there anything in the ordinances that dictates what the composition of the asphalt or what the composition of the parking area on a private property should be?
Not that I know of. Only if it's accessed by the, you know.
It has to be either a private road or a county road, which is county maintained, and the private road has to meet county standards. But as far as the private parking lot, it does not.
Does not, other than possibly handicap parking, ADA.
Further questions from the board to the applicant, or staff?
I just want a question.
Where the public, y'all's part is, is done at this point.
I have one gentleman back there with the hat on, and I'm gonna allow him to make the
comment.
I've got a good question for you, if you don't mind.
Go for it.
And if you wanna step in on it, that's fine. Any of y'all wanna step in, I would love to hear what you got to say.
No, you're the only one.
I don't understand, period. Justin Kilgore is very good at his job and is very well educated. He said, no, 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 and I'm not gonna waste y'all's time going through code four, five, dash, six, nine, seven, and everything else. I don't need to, I'm a businessman. Y'all know, you know what his paperwork said. So what's the difference between what he said all the way, all the way? What's the difference there? What's the difference now? It's still the same thing. And number two, there's a huge difference between way up Bent Tree Drive where we are and Cove Road. There's a big difference.
Yes.
There's a big difference driving up to our homes, and this isn't passionate, it's real, there's a big difference. I'm not, there's a big difference. You can't see his place from Cove Road. You can't see it from Cove Road.
Thank you, your points.
What about that hazard map? Let's address that.
I don't know if they're in a essay on property or not, and got all the biological stuff.
Your point's been made, thank you, thank you. I think Wes addressed that particular question.
And again, it's my, it was my judgment. I'll take the point.
All right. Further questions from the board? Of the applicant, or Wes? Do I have a motion?
I'd like a motion that we approve the zoning as requested.
We have a motion to approve the, the request on, that's been presented us. Is there a second? Okay, no second?
I'll send this one in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Two, three, four. Four in favor. We have one intention. Motion carries.
Wow. That's criminal. You know? It's all about where they get their.
No, but there was only. All, all. Negative vote, then. Carol, you're negative, vote. That's it? Thank you.
That's the procedural question? Well, it affected my presentation. Was I, when I started handing these out, was I on the clock?
I'm there.
Well, someone needs to tell me.
What's the caller?
Can I, can I ask that question of him? Can I ask a question? I'm just curious. I'm just curious. Once my name was announced, and I started handing out my handouts, was I on the clock?
Okay. Good. All right, so that closes that hearing. We're gonna now open up a new hearing. All right. We're gonna open up a hearing, excuse me, everybody. Open up a hearing on one nine zero two three four. James Miller. Folks, could I, could I have everyone's attention, please? Please be quiet, so we can carry on. Everybody, including the front row.
Hey, Larry. You can't hear.
You're not listening.
I let my whistle out. I'm sorry.
We're opening up a hearing on RZ one nine zero two three four. James Miller, Wes?
Yes, that's RZ dash twenty-one dash one nine zero two three four. That's James W. Miller, forty-six, seven, five, Sundance Circle, Cumming, Georgia, three zero zero two eight. The location is Buchanan Road, or Buckhannon Road, depending on what part of the country you're from, Ball Ground, Georgia, a rezoning from rural residential to agricultural, parcel ID zero six eight dash one one four. The change, the purpose of, proposed use is to change from rural residential to agricultural to build a barn to be used as an event center. The land would need to be zoned ag, agricultural, and have a special use permit to build. The current land use is rural residential. The character area is Marble Hill. The lot size is twenty-one point two zero acres. The road access is Buchanan Road. The zoning history is the property is currently zoned rural residential according to the official zoning map. As you can see, the current zoning and land uses of the adjacent properties. The recommendation from staff is approval from ag to rural residential, I mean, pardon, from rural residential to agricultural. And again, I have this comment to make, that the addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and the video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including and not limited to all witness testimony. In order that this information be part of the record, so it shall be available for the board of commissioners to review.
Thank you, Wes. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you for indulging our first hearing.
That was, that was adventurous. Wes, it's James A. Miller. I'm James A. Miller. Okay, I just heard James A., that's very corrected. Sorry, guys. This part's about the agricultural part?
Yes, sir, it is. Conditional use.
So your, your objective is to change it in order to be able to, will then open up a second hearing?
Correct. So, I don't, I don't need technicals for that one.
Questions from the, from the board?
It's stated in here that this is a vacant property, but there appears to be a building on it in the over here. Is there a building on this property now?
No, ma'am.
There is not?
That, that, I was, I was just placing it where folks could look and see where it was going to sit.
Oh, okay, where it was going to be.
Yeah.
Will you be moving to this property? Will you be living on the property?
I will. My kids are in Precy. It's hard to move kids, so it'd be three or four years here. My youngest is a freshman, so he'll be there after that.
Further questions? Mr. Miller? All right, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got four people in ten minutes. They're, they're, let's see. They're, they've circled, okay, excuse me, good catch there. We've got two people to speak on this part, and four people to speak on the second part. So Cindy?
I don't have no problem with the rezoning. I don't have a problem with that.
Sid?
I have no problem with the rezoning, but that leaves him the second part.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that it's resolved to move this rural residential to agricultural.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Looks unanimous, thank you. All right, we'll close that hearing. We'll open up a new hearing on the second part, which is CU one nine zero two three five. James Miller, Wes?
Yes, that is CU dash two one dash one nine zero two three five, and again, James A. Miller, forty-six, seventy-five, Sundance Circle, Cumming, Georgia, three zero zero two eight. Again, the location is Buchanan Road, Ball Ground, Georgia. The grant conditional use permit to operate an event center. The parcel ID is zero six eight one one four. The proposed use is, once the property is rezoned, the rural residential to agricultural to seek a special use permit, and if it's granted, proposal is to build a barn and it be used as an event center. The current land use is rural residential. The character area is Marble Hill. The lot size, again, is twenty-one point two zero acres, and the road access is Buchanan Road. The zoning history was rural residential. It now is agricultural. And we'll go ahead and skip over here to the one, two comments. The recommendation is the staff approves, recommends approval of the special use permit request if the zoning request is granted and the hours of operation do not extend past ten PM as a condition. The further conditional use is that you, conditional use approvals cannot include permissions or permit approvals from all required entities associated with the construction and operation and registered, requested use. Applicant is responsible for obtaining additional approvals from associated county, state, and federal entities if applicable. Wanted to make sure. And that, again, my comment about, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and the video recording of this planning commission's hearing, including and not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information be made a part of the record and shall be available for the board of commissioners to review.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, you're back on.
There you go. I didn't make it up, I didn't know there was that big. But I have some visual stuff, just in case. Just ten minutes. So I'm just gonna read this little short thing here. The venue will be thirty-two hundred square feet. Hopefully, it'll be running four to six hours, beginning at ten AM. Wes? It, it could be up to a hundred people. I'm not guessing, I don't know, that'd be a fire marshal thing. My target demographic is twenty-five to fifty people. Just normal folks like the rest of us trying to rent and enjoy, take some pictures, and go home. I have no intentions or desires to host an all-day event like some of the larger places you see. Some of the good things, increase our surrounding property value. A lot of people are gonna say no, but I disagree. My barn is three hundred and fifty thousand, I've already gotten quotes, plans, increased tax revenue. Hopefully, everything will be local, and that's gonna be my preferred vendors. Other than that, I'm just gonna save my time for rebuff at the end, if possible.
So, so who is the audience, Mr. Miller?
Normal folks like us, you know, I'm not looking at this big extravagant thing. I'm looking for somebody that's gonna be there coming at ten, getting ready by twelve, and be at home by eight.
What would they do?
They could, they'll have a place to, of course, have service and get married, and then the barn would be for catering, reception, something like that.
So it's, it's not a wedding venue, per se, it's another, it's.
It would be an event center. So, yes, weddings will be the main point of interest, I would assume.
And you said the hours of operation would be ten until eight?
It'd be ten until ten. I'm gonna follow all county ordinances, I wrote that on here, too, but my plan, like I said, I'm gonna look for somebody to be there all day. They're gonna come in at ten, and I don't know many weddings that y'all been to, but they don't go much past four to six hours.
So Wes, you, you wanted to suggest it at ten PM.
And I did so because we have found that there is none that extend past that, and we had a conditional use permit come before the board got requested due to the open past ten, and we denied it.
Well, it's my understanding that you checked all the others last month, and that most of them closed at six?
Some, some were open for six hours, is that correct, only?
Business hours were till six, the events were till ten.
Okay.
Business hours are just six.
And most of them did not even stay till ten, it just defended that was the limit. Some requested more, but.
Further questions for Mr. Miller?
Your application said probably twenty-five to seventy-five, and now you're saying there's a hundred?
No, ma'am. It's thirty-two hundred square feet, so that'd be the fire marshal, let's say, X amount. That was just me saying, I'm guessing here, but the fire marshal will have to make that call, but my target demographic is twenty-five to fifty people.
Okay, and you're, you have parkers faces, how many parkers faces do you find on the map?
It'll be seventy-five, it's, it's on the, the map.
Okay.
And the plan is, you know, you won't be able to see it, and I'm still gonna put up privacy trees at the end of the day, once we figure out exactly where, if it's approved, number one, or where it goes, but I'm gonna try to do my best to limit any kind of visual. And part of this here, on one of the, the closest neighbor that is visual is Michael, the Millers. It's, by Google Earth, it's crow flies. It's eight hundred and seventy-two feet. That's almost three football fields. The Huff's are kinda down the hill, it's six hundred and twelve feet. And the Pettys is over eight hundred feet. That's not Miss Cindy, that's her son Zach. They live up and over a hill. So visually, it's not gonna impact anyone.
Further questions for Mr. Miller?
How many exits and entrances you got into it?
Just one, existing entrance now, at the corner of the property.
Any plans to add another?
No, ma'am.
Further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, Cindy?
Okay.
Two and a half minutes to talk.
Come on, man. Okay, my property value starts. We start there with that. My property joins his, my son's joins his. My son has three small children that does not intend to be associated with the party, which will be a party barn, and it will be a wedding venue.
How many exits and entrances you cut into it?
Just one. Existing entrance now at the corner of the property.
Any plans to add another?
No, ma'am.
Further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, Cindy?
Yeah, okay.
Two and a half minutes to talk it on.
Okay, my property value starts. We start there with that. My property joins his. My son's joins his. My son has three small children that does not intend to be associated with the party, which will be a party barn. It won't be a wedding venue. It will be a party barn.
Okay. Speak to us, not to Mr. Miller.
And therefore, you know, you're talking 75 parking spaces. The road leading to his property is a one-lane road. I've been through this with the county all day. The county maintains, but it's not maintained to the standards that needs to be maintained. I've had pictures of Walgreens sitting around. I have them on my phone, and I will show up each of them if they'd like to see them. When you talk about all these people, you talk about the traffic, you talk about the road, but you then talk about public safety. And I was told at the time that we had to dispute over the road that public safety had to have access. When you put this much traffic on the crooked road that this will be on, public safety comes through there, somebody's going to be killed. Simple. Conditional. You approve it for conditional, and he says he's doing a wedding venue. Who's not to say later down the road, he's going to change it to something else? Conditional decreases our property values. It does not increase property values. Noise. My mom is by herself several times. Her property is right there, close to this property. When you put all this together, our community does not need a wedding venue. Here it is. And if my taxes goes up, I'll say it, but you send him my part instead of me paying.
We don't send taxes.
Well, I'll talk to the tax commissioner about that.
Yeah, you can take it up to the county.
But yeah, you know, you've got to think about public safety. What strain will this put on public safety? How much drinking will be going on? Because he gets distressed that it was just going to be a wedding venue. He said an event center. So, in my mind, that's a party center.
30 seconds.
So, I'll let somebody else have your 30 seconds.
All right, Cindy, thank you. Sid?
You're on. Thank you. I'm a newcomer. I've only been here 23 years, living on Buchanan Road, which is a one-mile-long dirt and gravel road. When there's traffic coming the other way, you look for a place that you can pull over and let whomever is approaching you come. We actually have the speed limit changed on the road a couple of years ago when I challenged them to come out and try to drive my road at the advertised 25 miles an hour without going over the hill. No one could do it, so they changed it to 15 miles per hour. On a heavy day, there might be a dozen cars going up and down Buchanan Road. The Buchanan family sits right over here. They've been here a long time. These are my neighbors. We have a way of life. When I built and moved in in 1998, I think there was four of us on the road, and we became a kind of a small community. We all know each other. We help each other out, and we care about each other. What we liked the most about it is what I searched for. I'm the son of a World War II Marine. I've lived in six foreign countries and probably twice that many states, but what I never had was a home. And I searched long and hard when I came to Georgia in 1980, thinking that I was going to move again in five years. But I loved it so much, I'm still here. The four seasons kept me here because you have a beautiful spring and fall. It doesn't get hot here. It doesn't get cold here. I found my slice of heaven. I have 22 acres with a lake full of fish. I have cows that occasionally come and visit me.
Your cow?
But my point is, is that I found the home that I never had, living in the military, and I wouldn't change that at all. I loved everybody I've lived, but now I have a home, and I have a way of life, and I have friends and neighbors that are sitting here.
30 seconds.
My eight-leggedy sitting right over here. She lives in Buchanan. And if we're going to have 50 cars going up this road and down this road, this one-lane road, at 10 o'clock, these cars aren't going to magically disappear. How long does it take to back through 50 to 75 cars? You're talking another hour. So, it's not 10 o'clock. It's going to be 11 o'clock. I don't have any children that I'm aware of, but if I did, they probably would be in bed by that point in time.
Time.
There are children involved in that, so I've used up my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Bozeman?
Yes? Well, I've been there all my life. It's a very nice place to live, but it's a very small road, very crooked, and very dangerous. We don't need the traffic that an event center is going to bring in. We don't need it, and we don't want it. And if you ever drive over there, you can understand what we're talking about. It's a very dangerous road.
So, you're on Harley Trail?
I'm right in the corner of Harley Trail in the counter. I can show you all those pictures on my phone if y'all want to see them.
I'm sorry to postpone. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just...
That's okay. That's my complaint. I don't want an event center because of all the problems it's going to bring. And there will be problems.
Okay. Thank you. With 30 seconds left, I'd like to steal a five minute if I may.
You meant to have?
Yeah. Well, let's hear it from Jason Gofor.
Okay.
And then we'll...we've got time left. We'll come back. Jason?
I live on Buchanan Road myself. It's 800 something feet down roughly, 12, 1400 for both of them. But you know, I don't want the noise from music and bands and stuff. I play in bands. I know what goes on at a wedding and at a business. I don't want that. I've got a 15 and 18-year-old kid. I don't want the grunts coming through there. And if the county can't keep the road fixed for us residents, then how are they going to keep it fixed for all that? Because I take my truckers and keep the road fixed half the time. I had to beg Chris Fancle to come out there and fix in the road where it comes into Wilkie Road, put hard gravel in it. So, like I said, how are they planning on keeping it fixed? This, if they can't keep it for us. I don't want the dust. I don't want the other grunts. I know what it's going to be. Like I said, it's a drum bit, right? And I'm not on solid road. I'm with every one of us. We're right on the road, and we don't want the dust, don't want the grunts.
And I can't keep this one a-go, do you?
Thank you. Sid, you got a little bit of time here.
I don't want this to be inappropriate, but as I said, we kind of have a little community up and down like one mile road, and all of a sudden, we have someone that doesn't even live here and did not give us the courtesy of even asking us if we had an opinion on this. The folks that live behind me had floated their interest in opening a wedding venue, but she talked to some of us, and when she heard our, I won't say gripes about it, but that's basically objections, she was kind enough to say, you know what? You're right. I want an opinion, and I want to live here.
Well, everybody...
Sorry. No, keep going.
Everybody approaches things differently. You can't call Mr. Miller for following the procedure.
No, sir.
So, Mr. Miller, how far down Buchanan Road is the property that you are trying to do this with?
I would say it's halfway. The road's not that long. I didn't think it was a mile, but it's halfway down the road. My property runs from halfway to the bottom down Harley Trail. Did I save time for just to answer some of their concerns for rebuttal? Not that it matters.
Sloan? Do you know Buchanan Road?
Uh, yeah.
Is it?
I didn't sign up to sleep.
I know. You know me, Sloan.
I know.
You're friends?
You got me. It's actually about a sleep.
So, how would you respond to the concerns raised about Buchanan Road's accessibility and traffic and that sort of thing? I'm just curious.
It's a pretty narrow road.
There's five S-curves in the first quarter mile.
So, you know, I'm a volunteer firefighter, so I think about roads. Sloan makes me drive an engine occasionally on mountain roads, which are paved, some not so well.
Can I show you some of these pictures? I mean, there's just five pictures.
Yeah. So, Sloan, do you have any concerns about responding on Buchanan Road from an emergency services perspective?
It's definitely a slow road that you have to travel on here regardless.
Is it one lane for the most part?
Yeah, if you start putting a fire truck and stuff on it, yeah, pretty much. You need an ambulance.
All right. Just curious.
So, just the rebuttal, the speed limit is 15 miles an hour. You can pass side-by-side and do it all the time. Granted, if it's a fire truck, that's a big old piece of equipment. I get that. But we're not doing 80. It's not a public health...
It's just not. The fire truck always wins.
Absolutely.
Questions from the board of the staff?
Just got one quick question for the gentleman there. Having moved into the county, I can fully understand and appreciate your...what you're discussing as far as getting your slice of heaven, because, yes, it is a special place. However, when does that cross over the line and dictate to others what they can or can't do with their property if they were to purchase it?
I'm not sure it's really a dictation-type of situation, but I think it's...
You're requesting that this board turn it down based on your having moved in, and you don't want your property changed? So, I mean, I'm trying to understand your argument.
Right. Well, for example, I don't know what you all do on the weekends, but sometimes I like to sit on my front wraparound porch and have an adult libation.
I think that's what they're planning on doing if I'm not mistaken.
Exactly, but mine is not interfering or imposing or putting another element. And, you know, trees are great from a sight standpoint, but they really don't stop sound coming down. And the peace, quiet, and solitude that we have on Buchanan Road is an element that went into, at least my decision-making, when I bought my property back in the mid-'90s. I'm sure that this young lady probably agrees with me. Again, we have kind of a unique situation with this group here that's sitting here.
Agreed. So, then my follow-up question would be, are you satisfied with your property taxes being as what they are?
I am. I think I'm treated very fairly.
Okay, so you're not interested in having any of those taxes lowered with the possibility of a business being involved?
Say that one more time.
You're not interested in having your taxes stay where they are or being lowered if enough businesses were to become involved in the county?
I would be happy to keep my taxes where they are to avoid having businesses...
To avoid businesses?
Yes, sir.
So, you're satisfied with the bedroom community staying?
Absolutely.
Further questions? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the application's been denied. I don't think it's seen before at this meeting, do you?
We have a motion to deny the request as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Howard, second. We have a second. Is there further discussion?
Still in the recommendation that proposed use could have an adverse effect on the surrounding area, and the proposed use is not consistent in this area of the multiple character area that's supporting the movement.
All right. All in favor of the motion to deny, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed? One opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miller. That will close that hearing. Are there board comments? Are there public comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?